Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside as well as on our website. There's also an automatic external defibrillator that's in the back of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, December 6, 2022. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, December 20, 2022, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Set.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
There's a little lag, Commissioner, sorry. There we go. Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, our citizen comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? All right. This is Board of Equalization?
Board of Equalization.
Yep. Okay. Next are resolutions. There's two resolutions. Approving application for tax exemptions on Form 453 for motor vehicles recommended by the approval, but for approval by the county treasurer. And item E, approval, approving applications for tax exemptions, Form 457 on motor vehicle recommended for approval by the county treasurer. Is there a motion to approve A and B and adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Present. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, November 22, 2022. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, our citizen comments. Anyone wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the report from the Director of Corrections. Good morning, Michael.
Good morning, Commissioners.
How are you?
I'm well. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have before you the report for the month of November of 2022. Enclosure number one, administrative services. After the fifth month of the fiscal year, we are $3,044,847 under budget. We do have some major projects that have been delayed because of construction timelines and supply chain. I'm thankful to tell you that one of those important projects is starting tomorrow. So some of this budget is, this budget surplus we're enjoying is due to the fact that those projects have not yet begun as soon as we anticipated they would. $728,150 was spent on overtime costs in November. While this number is still higher than normal, it is a significant reduction from the previous month. The completion of a critical phase of our security system installation occurred in mid-November. We anticipate lower costs in December now that this project has been completed and we no longer have to staff additional posts to compensate for some loss of functionality during that installation of our new system. Enclosure number two, community corrections and reentry services. The sanctioned center and transitional just start center placed a total of 14 individuals into community corrections, saving 85 bed days in jail. Work release admitted 21 individuals. House arrest admitted 42. The reentry assistance program, or RAP, admitted 22. 92 individuals were placed in therapeutic communities in the jail, and two individuals in the jail completed their GED. Pretrial services. Full integration of data systems is still in progress for the revised pretrial release supervision program. However, what I can report is there were 217 individuals placed on pretrial release. 452 individuals participated in the 24/7 sobriety program under the auspices now of pretrial release. And 64 individuals during November were monitored via GPS monitoring under pretrial release supervision conditions. Enclosure number three, compliance. Regular documentation is still being collected for all of our compliance processes. The leadership team has initiated a process of analyzing the findings from our security audit conducted earlier in the fall, and we are implementing recommended changes. Enclosure number four, personnel. We did have a rough month when it came to retention. 14 officers below the rank of sergeant left employment in November. However, 10 officers graduated from the academy on November 10, and we're continuing with accelerated training classes and overlapping field training to complete academy classes every four weeks instead of the usual six. A smaller class of five officers began training on November 12, or excuse me, on, excuse me, began training on November 14, and they actually just graduated last week. And seven officers began training yesterday. Three officers were promoted from CO1 to CO2. Enclosure number five, population. There were 1,247 admissions. That is a slight increase. There were 1,292 releases. That is also an increase. Our high count was 1,108, and our low count was 1,034. Our average daily population was 1,065, and that is a decrease of 75 from the previous month. And Commissioners, I think, I can't tell you that I can attribute 100% of this to our new pretrial release program, but I don't think it's a coincidence that we're supervising more people with greater conditions and supervision in the community, and we've seen a corresponding reduction in the jail population at the same time. There were 99 custodial sanctioned bed days. That's an increase. The US marshal population increased. The felony pretrial population decreased. The misdemeanor pretrial population increased slightly, but I want to remind you it had a significant decrease the previous month when we started the pretrial. Probation violations decreased. 19 of our, percent of our population were between the ages of 18 and 24. 67% of our population were minorities. 14% of our population were female, and 19% of our population were homeless or near homeless. Enclosure number six, medical. There were 1,090 intake screenings, and there were 366 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 19 times for emergent medical care. Five of those were by 911. There were four hospital admissions, which resulted in 26 combined days of hospitalization, and there were 58 off-site medical specialty appointments. Enclosure number seven, mental health. There were 167 initial psychiatric assessments. There were 14 initial mental health assessments. There were 119 mental health infirmary placements. And 184 individuals were placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols. I want to take a moment to point out that that's the impact on our infirmary. Those mental health infirmary placements primarily are those under suicide watch, and those placed on the drug and alcohol withdrawals are also housed in our infirmary. That's a, those are both really high numbers this month, and so the infirmary was quite busy. There were seven Board of Mental Health referrals and eight transfers to long-term psychiatric facility or the Lincoln Regional Center. Other noteworthy items. DCDC continues to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. We had two known cases of COVID-19 among the incarcerated population, and two staff members tested positive throughout the month. Our staff vaccination rate remains at approximately 75%. During November, we administered 31 doses of, first doses of Moderna, 15 second doses, and 21 booster doses. And separately, at Community Corrections, there were 15 doses of, second doses of Moderna administered. As of November, excuse me, I should say December 1st, we have fully vaccinated 1,943 incarcerated individuals and provided boosters to 438 individuals. We continue educational campaigns to encourage our staff and inmates to receive the Omicron-specific vaccine booster as well as the annual influenza vaccine. Our tablet, inmate tablet system went live in November. This system allows inmates additional ways to communicate with our staff and their family and friends. It provides them opportunities for educational and treatment-related activities. It provides opportunities for entertainment. It has access to an online law library. It allows them to send and receive secure messages to their attorneys. The tablet system allows the department to have an audit trail for all responses to inmate requests and grievances, to have alerts to communications that may indicate an emerging dangerous situation. And I have a screenshot, you're not going to be able to see it, but I have a screenshot on my phone. This, this, this individual sent out a message expressing a lot of hopelessness and, you know, thinking that there really wasn't a future for, for him. And the message was flagged and forwarded immediately to our medical and mental health staff so that we have an opportunity. It's another early warning system that we didn't previously have in order to respond to situations that we may not even been aware of. We can monitor communications with the aid of intelligent software to become aware of potential criminal activities. It provides an infrastructure for future increased access to video visitation and phone calls. And it enhances safety for our staff and inmates as electronic messages replace paper mail. And as I've told you about before, you know, they're, one of the bigger problems that correctional, corrections as a profession faces is dangerous substances such as fentanyl and K2 and others being liquefied and put on paper and trying to be sent in at the facility that way. Now that we're doing our communications personally and legally for our inmates electronically, that risk has largely been eliminated. This eventually will greatly decrease the clutter. Instead of piles of photos and papers and letters that are in cells, everything will be digital and electronic on the tablets. And Justine Wall headed up the development of this project for us and the implementation of it. She has a couple of tablets. I'll hand them out and you can, and she can tell you a little bit more about some of the functionality. You won't be able to see, these have to be connected to the specific Wi-Fi system that was installed at the jail, but you can see what we're talking about.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justine Wall, Rehabilitative Services Administrator. So we started looking at projects, the tablets, a few years ago. We took the first steps back in 2020, and then as a lot of our projects, COVID kind of derailed that. And so we got back on track with this project last year. Our go-live date for Phase 1 was October 28. And thus far, we've had really positive reception from our population in regards to the tablets. And also, I've heard some positive reports from our staff as well in regards to the engagement that the individuals in our, in our custody have been using the tablets. I know Director Myers told you a little bit about the functionality that the tablets offer. So some additional services are GED and other educational services are available on the tablets. Right now, we have limited space in our GED program, and we have quite a significant waitlist. So this gives the opportunities for individuals to at least start studying for their GED while they wait to get into the classroom. We also have other educational material. You know, we have 1,100, sometimes 1,200 individuals in our jail, and we have seven reentry specialists right now. So it's very difficult to help all those people. So the tablets have given us another avenue by allowing us to put some cognitive behavioral programming on this, and we've already had individuals take advantage of those classes. And then it also gives us the opportunity to put our own documentation on there. So one of our next step is to create a folder with reentry services and to start putting some of the community resources that are available so that individuals can start making their own plans until they're able to get into our therapeutic communities. The law library, I know he mentioned that. You know, again, with 1,200 individuals, it's very difficult to get everyone into the law library and give them the time that they really want to be in that law library. And thus far, we've had over 2,530 hours of people being in the law library with, using this tablet. So that has greatly given them, greatly increased the access they have to start working on their cases if they choose to do so. Again, Director Myers mentioned both mail. All of that is scanned in at a third party in Florida. So all mail is sent there. It's scanned in and sent to our records department. Our records department then reviews all the mail to either accept or reject it. And then our clients have access to view their mail. And that mail is available on tablets for up to 30 days after they're released. So if they would like to have paper copies of it, they can still access that information for up to 30 days and print it out. We also have email messages which allow our people to, again, stay in contact with their friends and family on the outside. We have entertainment such as movies, books, and games. Most of those do have a cost associated with them. The cost is pretty insignificant. It's one cent per minute. So an individual can essentially watch a two-hour movie for a dollar twenty. And then we also have some free books that are available as well. Our requests and grievances forms are available. This also helps with the lost requests that sometimes don't make it to the right department because now it's sent directly to the individual it needs to go to. And there's also warnings in there. So if a request is not being answered, then that individual is going to get warnings that they need to get this answered. And then supervisors also have access to that, so supervisors can hold staff more accountable for making sure that the grievances and requests are being answered. We also have notices on there. So if we need to make a notice for the entire jail to know, we can place it on the tablet so that everyone has access to that notice. And then staff can also send messages to the individuals in the jail as well. So there's a lot of times where things get slowed down because you're having to, like, for community corrections, we have to walk all the way across the jail, to the jail in order to communicate with people, and that can sometimes slow things up. So now we have an instant way to message individuals if we have additional questions about requests that they have made. Some of the services that are still to come is legal mail. So right now, we scan in all outgoing mail. Legal mail will be the next step. And that is a very specified procedure that we have to do that has met standards from a lot of legal departments in the country. Essentially, the legal mail does get scanned into the tablet in front of the individual so that they can witness it. They're the ones that are actually opening the mail. They're witnessing it get scanned, and then they sign off on it to show that they received their legal mail. Also, additional educational services. We have a few platforms that are on there, but we want to expand the educational services, and that's right on the horizon. There's been some issues with the platform, and they are telling us it should be probably ready within the next month. And this increases the educational services that they will have available to them. And SMART does have some cognitive behavioral program, but the reason why they are really interested in partnering, partnering with us is our interest in the programming that we do at the jail. We offer a lot of in-person things, and one of our reasons for going to a tablet is because we wanted to expand that. So SMART, which is our vendor, is really looking to us to help us develop that module for them. So we're going to be working in partnership with that. And then other univers, or, sorry, universe, not universities, other schools, not schools either, other jails, my background's coming into play. Other jails will then have access to that educational material as well, and that is free to the individuals in our, in the jail. And then another piece of that is we're looking to do incentives. So if individuals complete classes or they work on their GED, then we may give them some credit towards watching a movie or listening to music or reading a book. So that's another step that we're going to be looking forward to, to encourage individuals to take advantage of the services that we're offering on the tablet. Then another step that we're taking is to integrate our commissary so that individuals will be able to do their commissary ordering on the tablet instead of having to use the phones that sometimes are not available to use. Right now, we are at a one-to-six ratio, and that seems to be working okay. We haven't had too many. I know a lot of our staff were concerned about individuals fighting over the tablets, but that hasn't been too much of an issue. We've had a few people trying to hoard, but our staff have been really good at paying attention to that and taking care of the issue as it arises. Another benefit of the tablet that other jails have experienced is that the use of force tends to go down because individuals are engaged in other resources that are available on the tablet. And it's still new to us since it just started October 28, so we haven't really looked in a lot of detail into the, our use of force. But some of the staff have mentioned to us that it appears that the uses of force have decreased. But again, we want to give it a little bit longer so we get some more meaningful information before we start looking at that aspect of it. You know, I have looked at some numbers of, you know, and one thing is photos. A family can now send photos into their families as well. Thus far, we've approved over 8,000 photos that have come into the facility, so that's a significant increase. Those are viewed to make sure they're appropriate and approved. So we've approved over 8,000, and we've only disapproved a little over 700. So a small percentage considering the number of photos that are coming in. And again, those photos are kept on the tablets for over 30 days once they're released so that they can print them out if they choose to do so. Requests that have been submitted using the tablet, we, almost 10,000 requests have been submitted since October 28, and a little, almost 500 grievances have been submitted, and a little over, almost 2,000 medical requests have been submitted on the tablet as well. So it appears that our, our individuals are really utilizing the services that are available on there, and we look forward to increasing the amount of services that are on there. Thank you.
Thank you, Justine.
And we are ready for your questions.
Okay.
Commissioner Boyle?
Thanks for those presentations. Just a question for Justine on the, on the GED component. I appreciate all the information you gave, but one thing you said was there's a waiting list for GED. Is there a way to rectify that?
So I have actually put in a submit, a request for next budget to potentially increase the staffing for our GED. We have two full-time instructors right now, one for the CJC building and one for the jail. And we still, at least over in the jail, we still average anywhere from, anywhere from 30 to 60 people on the waiting list for our GED. So that's why this was so significant for us to help get them engaged. She, prior to this, she was trying to work with them individually, send stuff to their housing units, send books to their housing units so they can start working on them. But, you know, they need that individualized attention in the classroom base, and so that is going to be one of my requests for the upcoming year. We also have just signed a contract, and they started this summer, I believe, Learning for All, which is a literacy center who comes in and works with the individuals who may be a little bit lower than GED level to try and get them up to the point where they can start working on their GED. So they are in our facility four times a week and work with both men and women.
Perfect. Thank you. And then, Mike, once again, we see that 19% of the population is considered homeless or near homeless. Do we have, like, are you, can you give an example of the type of stabilization services that are available to them and what's, what's done to kind of prevent that? And also give an idea about what types, including the mental or the substance abuse folks, what types of, like, crimes are being committed? Do they need to be in jail? Are we able to get them the services they need somewhere else?
So regarding the individuals who are homeless, our ability to respond to their situation is in large part on how quickly they turn around and get out. So we, there are, there's a certain segment of that population that tends to commit crimes that, for lack of a better word, they're of a nuisance. And so they, you know, they refuse to leave a place of business, and they are brought to us, and they appear in court the next day or the following, and they're given time served and they're out. We have, what we need to fill a position. We've had a position in the past called a discharge triage person. It was one of our reentry staff who worked different hours and worked into the evenings. And we would try to do what we could within the timeframe of the release process to make sure that they got to a safe place, that they had bus tickets, if they, if they needed them or arranged for transportation. So in those cases, when the turnaround is quite tight... So in those cases, when the turnaround is quite tight, it's a challenge for us to do anything that's meaningful or lasting. For those who are with us for quite a while, it may depend upon what their charge is. It may depend upon what their level of functioning is. But we can engage them with our reentry services staff to make connections, whether it's treatment, housing connections, you know, case-managed resources in the community from other agencies that can, you know, pick up the baton when our services have ended. That's our reentry services staff. Their main mission is to make those connections for people during those times. And hopefully make, you know, at least temporarily disrupt that cycle of homelessness and incarceration. And in regards to those individuals who are
One minute.
in our custody with addiction issues, that also really runs the gamut. And typically, people, for the most part, you know, the system is doing what it should. When people have like a personal use amount of a substance, they're usually not coming to jail. If it's something that's a possession with intent to deliver, you know, then those folks are coming to jail. Those folks have also tend to have committed, might be an overstatement. Oftentimes, those folks have committed property crimes of some sort. You know, theft or shoplifting, theft, things done to support their addiction. And so depending on the magnitude of those crimes, those folks may be in jail not because they have an addiction, but because of the impact of their addiction. Nonetheless, you know, we try to make, get people connected into our own internal resources and also connect folks to the, hopefully, the appropriate problem-solving court in the community.
Thanks. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thanks for this. Some of these questions will come as no surprise to you. The first one has to deal with the average daily population, I think, is down, which is good news, by 75. This is on page two. Any accounting for that? I mean, this seems to be a trend the last few months.
I think it's, I think it's a, my best guess is it's a correlation to our pretrial release that launched in late September, where we have given the judges more choices and more resources to choose from. And in some cases, it's still up to the judge. The judge can set the bond at whatever he or she thinks is appropriate. And they often do. But if the person happens to pay it, they are also ordering them to supervisory services that we provide. There may have been times for certain crimes where judges say, well, if you agree to participate, and this is how it's been for years with 24/7 in regards to alcohol and drug offenses. If you agree to participate in this program under these conditions, I'll lower your bond or I'll put your bond amount at zero if you agree to participate in this service in the community under our supervision. So I would say that that seems to be, it's at least very coincidental in time that we have seen.
That's great. I mean, we'll see how that plays out over time, but that's a good trend. The racial demographic seems to remain very high as far as a majority-minority population of, my calculation is 67.3%. No movement really on that.
No. And Commissioners, I hope, I want to watch really carefully who is, in relation to the pretrial services supervision, I want to track that very carefully regarding the.
That's a good point. Maybe going forward, if we could get a percentage of the participants in the pretrial services and see if they track the percentages in our population. They should. I wouldn't think any particular demographic portion of our population should be more entitled to pretrial services than others. It would be good to have that number going forward, okay?
We will begin tracking that.
On page two indicates that we had another high overtime month of $728,150. Although you indicated lower than last month. What was last month's number?
Well, the previous month, I gave a couple of disclaimers. It was over a million. But that month had three pay periods in it, which kind of sort of artificially boosted it up. And we also had that security project that I've alluded to that we had to staff, probably about eight positions 24/7 that we didn't normally staff.
So this $728,000 is way higher than we'd like to see it.
It is.
Would be a huge number if that was continued over a fiscal year.
Absolutely.
So what is your opinion on why we have such high overtime expenditures every month?
You know, the biggest driver is staffing levels, of course. And, you know, we hope that we make some end roads in that with some changes that might be on the horizon. You know, we have seen, we achieved near 100% staffing early in 2021, very early. And when we achieved that, our overtime number went down to about 150,000, when it typically had been running between 300,000 and 400,000 prior to making that gain. So if we can make that sort of a gain in the future, that's what I would hope to see as a result.
That's great. And that leads to my next question regarding that. So staffing levels are authorized at 494, currently on hand, 419. The bulk of that shortfall among COs, the frontline corrections officers, authorized at 349, and actually on hand, at 282, 80%, where most of the other categories are staffed at nearly 100%. Why are we seeing that huge shortfall in corrections officers?
Well, there are some local factors here that I think we're working on correcting. But corrections across the board, across the country, has been challenged to find those frontline workers. It is a very.
I appreciate that. These local factors.
Time. Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, Commissioner Kavanaugh already asked, we know what the authorized staffing levels are. We know what type of shortfall we're up against. And I don't want this to, I don't want this to come off as too much of a diatribe. But anybody that's watched me for two years will probably assume at the end of it that it was a diatribe. But I don't particularly think I have that thin a skin. My wife would disagree, especially if she calls me fat. She never has either, by the way. I make mistakes every day. And I think all the Commissioners can probably vouch for that. We make mistakes on probably a daily basis, monthly basis, an annual basis. I've received email, phone calls, countless emails, phone calls, correspondence. I've seen social media posts, I don't even frequent social media that often, that would essentially put this county board, maybe even me in particular, in a position where we or I am defending myself based on our potential abdication of our authority in regard to public safety. Or implying that we're just flat out not paying attention. What I would say is, in regard to that, I can tell you that the county union negotiating team commissioned by this board has been negotiating, what I would consider in good faith, with the FOPA for six months, approximately six months. By the way, that includes marathon executive sessions back in this room where we would get done with a board meeting at 10 o'clock, and we don't leave here until 1:00 or 2:00. Public safety, I can't speak for everyone, public safety, I said this when I first came in here, is paramount. It's the main thing that the county has to take care of. And that includes corrections, and includes the Sheriff's Department, includes everything, take the whole umbrella. It's one of the main things that we have to deal with. I don't think anybody on this board, after all of those marathon executive sessions and everything we've had to deal with, thinks anything differently. I can assure you of that. I think it's intellectually lazy or shows a lack of understanding to assert anything different. And it's also short-sighted to think that the only reason that all of this turnover occurs is just about money. We are working, defending ourselves. We are working to actually put these corrections officers in a position where they're paid the way that they should be paid in a county like Douglas County. We've got almost a third of the state's population here, and we've also got a third of the state's problems. We're working to get that done, and I think we're going to. I can assure you, this board's committed to making the corrections department as safe and as efficient as we can possibly make it. That mission will continue. If it doesn't, then we're going to have debates out here, and I'll debate with my colleagues. I'll fight with them respectfully. That's not happening. This stuff takes time. And to Mike's point, I'm almost done, I think. To Mike's point, it's not just about pay. A corrections officer is the toughest job in town. I'd rather roof houses. And I've done that, and it's hard. I almost fell off a roof. That's a hard job.
One minute.
I would rather roof houses. I've seen what these folks do. It's very difficult work. It's not just about pay. It's an arduous job. You have to find the right type of individual, the right type of demeanor to actually do it. I don't think I could. You have to find the right people and the right fit. Pay, it starts there. And then it goes to actually a work environment that Mike is trying to promote, Justine's trying to promote, everybody on the team is trying to promote. Then we win. Right now, we're a little behind. I can assure you, we're not letting that slip through the cracks, and we're not blind to it, okay? So come to me, talk to me. I can fill you in with more details, but the fact of the matter is, I think we're going to get there. Mike, thanks for the information you provided. Diatribe completed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson. Mike, thanks for your updates monthly. The project that you said will start tomorrow, if you don't mind, what is that important project? I just want to be sure.
This is a project that enhances our safety in the jail. This will put up safety netting on every housing unit that has a top tier. We have had individuals jump in the past. So this should, you know, I hate to use the word eliminate, but make it really hard for somebody to do that. This also replaces the bunks in our celled units with ones that are, I believe, much safer going forward. There is a third project to kind of fortify the community corrections building a little bit that will allow us to maybe take a different subset of our population in the jail and house them there. Because there is unused bed space in that building. And we're trying to be as creative as we can to safely utilize that. And at the same time, that'll take costs and pressure off of the secure detention facility.
Okay, thank you. And those are needed, and we have talked about that. I was just wanting to know what it was, and what's anticipation on time to get it all completed?
It will take, the construction timeline is nearly a year to do all of it.
Really?
Yes.
Okay. Lastly, I think you said 19% of the people in our facility homeless?
Yes. Homeless or are likely to be homeless because they are hanging on by such a thread that just their incarceration alone for a few weeks would cause them to be homeless.
Which, to put that percentage, if I'm correct, is approximately 200 people.
That's correct. We are, we have said that we are, in essence, we are the third-largest homeless shelter in Douglas County.
So I think that's an area that, and I know Commissioner Boyle and others have talked about. It seems to me that's an area we should be discussing more and looking at what we can do and maybe have some community partnership about that and listen to maybe some of your input and citizen input as to what steps might be taken and from some of the other community homeless shelters to have a, maybe not a long-range plan, but getting a plan in place of, hey, where we'd like to be in the next 18 months as far as trying to reduce those numbers. And I know that mental health is a big priority. But the homeless situation is also, to me personally, a big priority.
And Commissioner, and most mental health initiatives that we would engage upon are going to touch that very population. You know, there's a very high co-occurrence of being homeless and having a chronic and severe mental illness. So I think that, you know, those initiatives dovetail naturally.
And just so you know, your neighbor there to the west on the corner of 19th and Leavenworth, I watched that building for the last 20-plus years. I talked to Don Rowe on the city council about going by because you don't have to go through a window to get in there. You just walk through the door because it's wide open, which to me is a pretty dangerous situation for everybody in our community. So I am working, and I know he is, on figuring out, hey, we need to contact the owner and get something done immediately on safety and everything else at that building. And to me, it should be condemned sitting there for the last 25 years vacant.
Thank you, Commissioner. That'll make the environment safer for our staff as they come and go and for the community in the area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks. Following up on where we left off, the local conditions that impact on the staffing problem. And Commissioner Friend touched on this. What would you say they are, like the principal ones?
Well, I think a lot of it, you know, what I was referencing is some, there's been some very significant changes in the labor landscape and contracts from our neighboring agencies over the past nine months or so that have had an impact. And just the labor shortage in general, with the very low unemployment rate and the fact that individuals, you know, Commissioner Friend referenced that this is a very tough job that our officers do. They go through a lot. They take a lot of risks with their physical and emotional health every day. And you can make a decent living today without taking that level of risk and demand. And so, you know.
I understand, and I agree with all of that. And I commend our corrections officers for, you know, their public service in performing this dangerous but necessary task in our community. Do you conduct exit interviews with these, say, in the last month, dozen people who have left corrections?
I don't always get to every one of them, but I try to get to as many as I can.
And what are they saying in these exit interviews?
It really sort of runs the gamut. Some of it, you know, there has been a lot of overtime. And that's probably the biggest single factor. It becomes, especially if they have families, sort of an untenable situation for them to continue in meeting their obligations to their children and also, you know, being subjected to overtime on a routine basis.
Are they going to better-paying jobs?
Some of them are, yes.
Are they going to better-paying jobs in the corrections profession?
I have had a few, yes.
That pay is a factor.
Yes, I have lost some that have just cited, you know, this contract that Agency X has is more appealing.
Just kind of a technical question. How many beds are in a mod or a sleeping unit?
So that varies. In the main jail, there are 30 different housing units. And they vary from, the smallest ones are 32 beds. With the exception of the infirmary, the infirmary is actually sort of carved up into three small units. But that's sort of unique to deal with some specialized populations. But in general, they range from 32 to 64 beds.
Would 64 be the average housing unit?
The new addition to the jail that was constructed in 2004, I don't know if you call that new anymore, but the newest, is, those are all 64-bed housing units.
Of the 30 housing units. Of the thirty housing units, how many are sixty-four beds, if you know?
I believe ten.
And are the rest thirty-two beds, or does it vary?
It, it varies. There are some, there are some other, in the annex where it's open, sort of barracks bunk style, there are some sixty-four bed units back there as well. But there are, there are also some forty-four bed units in there. They're, they're all, some, they have different sizes. And the original construction of the jail, those, those eight to ten original housing units, those are all smaller, ranging from thirty-two to thirty-six beds.
Thank you.
Justine? On those tablets, are we able to track, like, what the individual is on? And then, overall, how many are on that program?
Yes. So, for example, there's a program on there called Beyond Prison. It's a reentry program, and ninety-three individuals have utilized that program thus far. And not only does it tell you how many, but it tells you the percentage that they've completed of the program. So, it's got modules, and it'll give you the percentage that they completed. With our, we have Khan Academy Lite, which is a GED program. That one, we don't have reports on yet, but the platform that we're, the one that we really want is called iPathways. And there is just so much you can do with that program. And there's a lot of different reportings that can be gathered from that program as well.
And so, when you said that for the GED, would it be possible to provide a virtual teacher? I know that the face-to-face and one-on-one is always better, but even if it's some prep work or?
So, we do have the infrastructure to do that now. We have webcams, and we have TVs in the classrooms. We have limited classroom spaces, which is one of our issues that we have, which is why we were looking at the tablets. These tablets do not actually go out to the internet, and they can't communicate with people on the outside like that. So, I would have to probably look into smart communication to see if that's available. They have them really locked down so that we know what individuals are doing on the tablets. But, I mean, that is an option to look at maybe our webcams and with our computers, if we have some classroom space, space available. Right now, we're getting ready to start an intensive outpatient program with the Community Mental Health Center, and that's taking up nine hours of our classroom space every, every week. So, our, we have all this program we want to do. We just have very limited space and time available to do that.
And then, are there, do we have female-specific programs? I'm assuming these are in the female mods as well.
We do in-person. We haven't done anything, we haven't started really doing the programming on the tablets yet. We just have what they have available. We are seeking to put our own programming on the tablets. So, in-person classes, they are, we do have some female-specific programming that, that we have available.
And then, what length of time does each individual get on the tablet?
Right now, we have not specified a time limit yet. We wanted to see what the utilization was gonna be and to see if there's any issues with the sharing of the tablets. One thing our vendor did say is that if the whole housing unit is using at least the tablets, at least forty percent of the time, they will increase the ratio of tablets that are available because they see that they're being utilized. So, we've only had them for a little over a month yet, so it's a little early to make that perception. But that is available on the tablets, and that is some information that I can provide in future reports.
So, so we could tell if someone's sitting on there watching, you know, movies for eight hours?
Yes.
Or listening to music for eight hours rather than taking advantage of some of the programming?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, this breaks down, for example, like, last, since they've been in use, there's been eighteen point five hours of books that have been read and only twelve hours of movies thus far. So, some of the other services have actually received more priority for some of our, our individuals.
Okay, okay. Thank you. No other questions or comments from commissioners? Anyone else wishing to speak during the Board of Corrections? Seeing none, thank you, Mike and Justine.
Thank you, commissioners.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
A moment, please. Commissioner Garcia has left the meeting early at a conflict, and the motion passes six to zero.
We'll enter into the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia is not present. Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Madam Chair?
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is our consent agenda, items A through G. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We will move to citizen comments. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Unfortunately.
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Connie Ranky.
Okay, thank you.
And I have some handouts for you. Five minutes is not very much to go through the information I'd like to share with you, but this is a subject that not very many people want to speak about. I am very concerned about our elections in Nebraska and specifically in Douglas County, though across the, the state. And I brought some information to you. I personally have actually gone out and verified votes. I got the voter roll, saw who voted and who did not on that voter roll, and then actually went to people's homes and asked them if that was correct. And the alarming thing is, and that was in Lancaster County, that, that's where I live. The votes were not accurate. There were people that went to the polls, and they said they already, the, the poll workers said they already voted. In, in the presentation, there was one individual that said she got four, she got four ballots in the mail for the two thousand and twenty election, and her husband also got four ballots. So, in that household, they, they received eight ballots that could have been used in the election. I found sixteen cases of multiple ballots, which is a, a big alert and danger in my, in my canvassing effort. It was just something that hadn't been spoke about, hadn't been investigated. And that's the result of things that, that mathematically have been found in the state of Nebraska. The, the graph on the front of the, the handout that I gave you is actually Douglas County, the blue line population, the, the second line registrations, and the red line voting. The, the man that put this together actually could predict what our votes would be to almost perfectly based on the number of registrations. And this happened all across the state of Nebraska. All across the nation, we're seeing that the registrations were almost perfectly correlated to the votes, which, when I heard this, I, I couldn't believe, I couldn't believe this. And that's why I did go door to door and ask if our votes were accurate. The, the correlation is, is just way off. Also, if you see on the third page, we had more voters, we had more votes than votes that were marked on the voter roll as, as voted. So, comparing the actual results of the election, the official canvassing report, compared to the voter roll, there were four thousand, four thousand votes that are not accounted for, and the Secretary of State cannot give us the names of those individuals, which is, which is a major problem. The next page shows some of the results of the canvassing that I did, the canvassing report. We found a woman that had died eight years ago and received a ballot. I hope you'll read through and look at this information. And like I said, I believe, because I actually went out and talked to individuals all over the state. So, thank you for, for hearing, and I hope that you'll take time in the future to hear a presentation of some of the, the more important facts about this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning, Ward.
Good morning.
My name's Bob Linden. I'm a retired E living here in Omaha, Nebraska. Some of you may remember me. I was your insurance agent from about nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety-nine. I've also been the insurance agent for the city of Omaha, the Omaha Public Housing Authority. To state the least, I've done a lot of public business over the years. The reason I became an insurance agent for public entities, particularly Douglas County was my first, was for one reason. I was given the opportunity to bid on your insurance, provide the best coverage you could get, and give you the right advice in the case of things coming up that insurance would apply for. Dick Schotker, some of you may remember that name, okay? PJ remembers him well. He said to me, Bob, he said, it's gotta be a public bid. If it's not a public bid, it just won't be honest. We gotta be open, and I said, absolutely, Dick. So, every piece of business I ever got from Douglas County, whether it was the county hospital, Tim Dunny Sheriff's Department, okay? The county corrections, the public officials bonds, a general liability policy covering every single liability of Douglas County for thirty-six thousand five hundred bucks a year at five million dollar limit that was issued in nineteen eighty or eighty-one. That was the first policy I wrote for you guys. I tell you this because you entrusted me to tell you the good, the bad, and the indifferent, okay? When things came up in the county corrections department, if things came up in the sheriff department, I would notify the risk manager that I was working with at the time. You ought to look at this, you ought to look at that. You gotta keep your insurance company taken care of properly. I'm here today to tell you that I believe there's things you should consider. I stand in support of Connie, the lady that just talked to you. Not only have I looked at a lot of information, and by the way, I sent you all a thirty-four-minute audiovisual presentation of that, September the third, two thousand and twenty-one. I believe the only gentleman that didn't get it was Roger Garcia, and he's not with us right this second. But I think everybody else did get it, according to my thing. I didn't get a response from any of you folks. I'm not a hack, guys. I didn't come here to waste my time or yours. As I told Mary Ann before I walked in here today, there's enough people looking at enough things saying, there might be some problems here, folks. That's smoke. Usually where there is smoke, there is fire. We have to make sure that our county, based here within the home office, election systems and software, you're using their equipment. Is it looked at properly? Do you know if it can be hacked by Wi-Fi intrusion? Do you know if they're doing the right thing? Because if you don't, you should. You're the public officials that are in charge of this county. I love this state. I love this county, and I love this city. My great-grandfather homesteaded in eighteen seventy-four, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty years ago, in Jefferson County, out by a little burb called Alexandria, Nebraska. This is something that's worth saving, our way of life. We don't want to be intruded by other factors. That's what I had to say today. I thank you for your time, and I ask you to look more carefully at that video that I sent you, September third, two thousand and twenty-one. Thanks again, folks.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning. Larry Store, five one one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. Very quickly on the election. On January nine, or December nineteenth, at the State House, there will be a hearing regarding the election. And a gentleman that was on the ballot as a write-in candidate for governor. We never got to see what the vote was on that. We never got to hear what the vote was on that. And they don't want to disclose it. How's that for free and fair elections? Anyway, there's a court hearing involving the Secretary of State, who, by the way, got to pick his own judge for this hearing. I find that kind of strange. But thank you, gentlemen. Yes? Okay, on to the, to the season. Merry Christmas to y'all. And I just want to go back to something I started a long time ago about the flag and the swearing-in ceremonies and the pledge that we say to our republic. Apparently, we've all forgotten that because there's a national agenda on LGBTQ one plus whatever ever ever agenda. It's a worldwide agenda. Our federal government and this current president is pushing it to other countries. We send an envoy over to those countries and push that agenda to cultures that do not want it. This information from the Epoch Times, and I will leave a copy of it. Why is U.S. foreign policy now pushing the LGBTQ one I or plus or whatever it is agenda on the world? I'd like to know, too. We don't belong to the world. We're not subservient to the UN or anything else. This is a republic, not a democracy. American foreign policy has a new inertia policy promoting that. What other countries' traditional cultures and values regard as sexual devency in all its various forms. I say this clearly that we are a nation founded on Christian principles, which are against such practices. Not the people, not the person, not the heart, but the practices. Yet, we hear this every week. We see it in the proclamations here in the civic center. Yet we hear this every week, we see it in the proclamations here in the Civic Center. And we citizens who believe in our country and took an oath of allegiance to the Constitution think that this should be stopped. Mr. Biden's Presidential Memorandum on Advancing Human Rights, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, signals a new shift in American priorities. Yes, those are not my words, but I do subscribe to it. Since the count, countries founding the basic objectives of American foreign policy has been and should remain to pursue, promote, pursue, promote, and support Americans' geopolitical, economic, trade, cultural, and other natural interests abroad. But some people think human rights is a better template than the authoritarian models of adversaries, such as China, Russia, and Iran. That gets into the area of Marxist philosophy, which we hear often and see often.
One minute.
In the, one minute? Excuse me? To give you an idea, there is a picture along with that last Omaha Reader Magazine, which seems to get a lot more information out of you people than we do, about such practices. And smack dab in the middle of it is a picture of a Muslim lady, I guess, with the hijab. Do they not know that ladies over in Iran are protesting and taking off their hijabs and burning them and maybe giving themselves a sentence of death? Yet we do not require people that come to our country now to swear allegiance to our country, to our values? Do they not know that that's anti-Christian?
Time.
That it's anti-American?
Time.
Not the person, not the American.
Larry, thank you.
So stop promoting it. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak before the Board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to our presentations. The first is a three-plus-one Cash Vest update by Mr. Tyler Frame and Garrett McDonald. Good morning. I think just to, as way of reminders, Tyler and Garrett were here about a, I don't know, a year ago or more. And the Board encouraged them to come back to give us an update, so.
Well, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you very much for having me. It's great to be back in Nebraska. I'm from upstate New York, so very similar climate to Nebraska, but you all are so welcoming whenever we come here. You know, from the moment that I get on the plane from Atlanta, everyone's friendly and welcoming, to getting to a restaurant last night, people offering me a seat at the bar, giving me suggestions, what to order off the menu. You all are a real treat to be around, and I'm just grateful to to be in front of you today, so thank you for the opportunity. As Mary Ann said, we are Cash Vest by Three Plus One. My name's Tyler Frame. We were here, I think it was October of last year. We're grateful to be in your presence again. Wanted to give you a brief update of the progress that we've made so far in two thousand and twenty-two with the Treasurer's Office and Joe Lorenz on the finance team. I can't say enough about how great it's been to work with them. Treasurer Ewing has been a real steward of the county's taxpayer funds, and we really want to just go into a couple highlights about what's been achieved so far in two thousand twenty-two, where we see things going in two thousand and twenty-three, and to answer your questions. So, looking on the first slide here, one of the things that we're not only helping Douglas County with, but your peers across the country, is understanding in an economic environment that is so uncertain today, where is the county's cash position going in the future? Now, the Treasurer's Office is already doing cash flow forecasting. What we do at Cash Vest is complement that, looking at the county's taxpayer dollars from a liquidity perspective, and being able to confidently show where your overall cash position is going to be six months into the future. Now, that's really important right now, because a lot has changed in the last twelve months. Year over year, and this is through January of two thousand twenty-two, we provide annual updates to Douglas County. The next update will be in February of two thousand twenty-three. But through January of two thousand twenty-two, your overall cash position was up almost eighty million dollars year over year. On top of that, your minimum cash position, so the minimum point that your cash level hit overall increased by almost sixty million, looking at the most recent twelve months compared to the twelve months prior. Our job is to really take advantage of that, show you, show the Treasurer's Office and the finance team, from a third-party data perspective, what that means. Why is that important right now? Interest rates have gone up more quickly in the last twelve months than they ever have before. In January of this year, the effective federal funds rate was between zero and twenty-five basis points, or zero and point two-five percent. As of today, they're at three point seven five to four percent. We're even expecting that as soon as tomorrow, the Federal Reserve could increase rates again by another point five percent. That's a really key piece of information right now, because Douglas County has a growing cash position. The marketplace is willing to pay more for cash than it ever has before. And looking into the future, our forecast suggests that your cash position is going to continue to grow. Part of the reason that your cash position is up from last year is, of course, the American Rescue Plan Act funds that you received. On the third slide, you'll notice that one thing we do is stress test every single dollar the county has, from the moment that you receive it to the moment it's spent, how long is that dollar available for? And pairing that marketplace information with our liquidity stress tests puts a value on every dollar that the Treasurer's Office and the finance team has stewardship over. Because your cash position continues to grow, our stress tests have identified more cash than previously available, about two hundred and ninety-one million dollars that could be strategically invested. Now, at the beginning of this year, about a hundred and fifty million dollars was invested in fixed income. As of today, we estimate that to be a little over two hundred million. Part of the reason that's been done is because of the great collaboration we've had with the Treasurer's Office and the finance team. We've been able to share data, show that the county could confidently invest its funds for various periods of time, and also calculate the benefit that comes from that. We believe that nothing bad can come from planning. And at Three Plus One, we are not a bank, we're not an investment advisor, we don't take deposit of any funds. We are a liquidity data provider. So our job is to provide an unbiased, third-party approach and give you the information and tools that you need to confidently manage the county's cash, so that over the long term, you might not have to raise taxes as much as planned. If we can take a portion of that tax burden off of the taxpayers by using data and implementing it, that's a win for us, that's a win for Douglas County. On the fourth slide, you'll notice some of the benefits that have been realized in two thousand and twenty-two. Oh, forgive me. Thank you. Yes, thank you. In two thousand and twenty-two and going into two thousand and twenty-three, we've been able to help the county achieve over a four million dollar benefit. Couple areas where that came from. The first being investment of your American Rescue Plan Act funds. Strategically looking at these dollars, collaborating with the Treasurer's Office and the finance team, sharing benchmark data so that you can earn and save as much on these dollars as possible. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, because these funds need to be spent by two thousand and twenty-six. And while the rate environment has been so valuable to the county, it's a perfect time to make that reality. We also collect marketplace benchmark data from across the country. We work with over a hundred and twenty entities, we're in seventeen different states. We are collecting transactional data, marketplace benchmark information, and through sharing that with Douglas County, we were able to help you all achieve an exception rate on your money market account that is more in line with current benchmarks. And based on the average balances that sit in that account, that's about a four million dollar annual benefit. We are also looking at the county's bank analysis structure. Is your arrangement with the bank appropriate relative to what we're seeing across the country? Looking at those bank analysis statements, it's great reading material if you're having trouble sleeping at night. But one thing we do is parse every line of them, understand what the cost is, how much does the county need to leave on deposit to cover its banking costs? Is it appropriate relative to what your peers are paying? And being able to help you collaborate with the bank, share data with them, and have a more productive conversation is really helpful to ensure that you're always saving the most. Your Cash Vest score, which we use as a national benchmark across the country, also increased this year by five points, up to an eighty-seven. Our goal, and we're confident that next year we can do this, is to get you into the nineties. After the county receives at least four quarters in a row of a ninety or above Cash Vest score, we induct you into our Cash Vest Ninety-Plus Club, and it recognizes the entities across the country that are in the top ten percent of liquidity management. So we look forward to that. Going into two thousand and twenty-three, what are our next steps? Well, from a stress testing and forecasting perspective, our data has identified some additional funds that could potentially be invested. So our job is going to be to continue collaborating with Treasurer Ewing and his and his team and the finance office to make that a reality. We're also going to continue sharing updated benchmark data from a bank analysis perspective and an investment marketplace perspective. That's going to be really important as the Federal Reserve continues to raise interest rates. Banks are usually willing to pay more on their cash, and we want to help you take advantage of that and know that your structure is in line with what your peers are paying or earning and saving, and what you're getting from the bank and your financial providers. We're also going to continue working with the team to strategically invest your American Rescue Plan Act funds as they are available. Of course, eventually, those funds will be spent, but while we have them under our stewardship, we want to allow the county to make the most on them as they possibly can, because any interest earned on rescue funds is non-restricted. Again, our goal is to really be an extension of the county's finance team. We want to provide data and tools, forecasting, marketplace benchmark data, to confirm and help you always earn and save as much as possible for the taxpayers. We are very appreciative of the opportunity to serve you all. We thank you for the opportunity to give you an update today, and we look forward to your questions, so thank you.
Thanks, Tyler. Do have a light Commissioner friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Tyler, you had just alluded to this. Welcome to Nebraska, by the way. By the way, I I said this earlier, you look younger than the last time I saw you. What? The water up there or something? I don't know. Hey, hey, do you, the strategically invested funds, they have to be spent in accordance with ARPA statutory guidelines? You said that, you said, when, when you say they're non-restricted, does that mean, and maybe it's a question for Joe, but can you dump them into a cash reserve? So, the county's cash reserve, when they're unrestricted, that means we can, you know, deal with other budgetary issues, correct?
Forgive me, Commissioner. So, the interest that you earn on the funds is unrestricted. The funds themselves have restrictions, but any interest earned on them does not have restriction.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, again, Tyler, this is amazing news and feel very confident the partnership will continue to get us into that ninety-plus. That's a good goal to, for us to work at. We'll have you back again for an update, but can't thank you and extend my wishes to Garrett, and thank you for the work that you're doing with our treasure and finance team for Douglas County.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity. Great to see you again.
All right. Item B is going to be laid over until next month, I mean, until next week. We'll move to committees. The budget report from the Finance Committee as presented, and then we do have one ARPA. It's an approval of a resolution authorizing the award of a hundred thousand dollars to fund the establishment of a South Omaha Immigrant History Museum to be located within the historic Forty-second Street Center Mall. And this is out of Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Kavanaugh's allocation of ARPA funds. With that, do we have a motion to approve? Motion and a motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh, second by Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. This is a glad moment for me, and I'm sure Commissioner Garcia, who had to leave, joins me in this. The establishment of this South Omaha Immigrant Museum is near and dear to my heart as the grandchild of a couple of South Omaha immigrants who came as political refugees during the War of Independence in Ireland about a hundred years ago, and established our family in America. I want to particularly note the assistance that was given to this initiative by a couple of really key individuals who have worked for years on South Omaha historical projects, Mr. Jose Garcia, and I think he's here today, and Mr. Gary Castric. Mr. Garcia is the General Director of the Mexican-American Historical Society and Museum in South Omaha, and Mr. Castric is the conservator of the South Omaha Museum and preeminent South Omaha historian who established, actually, prototyped, South Omaha Historical Museum when he taught at South High School a number of years ago. They are joined in this initiative by Dr. Gene Chavez of the Kansas City Museum, who will be part of the staff in establishing the South Omaha Historical Museums, South Omaha Historic Immigrant Museums Archives at the Center Mall at Forty-second Center. And I just want to read into the record a couple of items from this resolution. It notes that it is our intent to reach out to many, the many descendants of those ethnicities that have shown a history of settling and making a living in South Omaha for the purpose of creating a representative board of directors who will guide this endeavor in a manner that engages and reflects the immigrant history of South Omaha. And the exhibit tours, the programming of educational presentations, will be gleaned off of one of the largest archives and collections of historically related records, objects, and data in existence related to the hundred and fifty-year history of the immigrant experience of the Magic City, which is South Omaha's name. There will be a Founder's Conference relative to this open to the public in January of two thousand twenty-three, and we'll have some more information on that. I just want to commend these gentlemen and all the folks who have helped out with this, and note that we're actually opening this museum up to all of the immigrants. and note that we're actually opening this museum up to all of the immigrants who came to South Omaha from all over the world, and we'll probably be noting that in a subsequent amendment to the wherethes that we currently have. But this is a great step forward to recognize the mosaic of folks from all over the world who came seeking the American dream and settled in South Omaha and made it the Magic City that it is. So, thank you, gentlemen, for being here today. We appreciate your help on this. We look forward to the ribbon cutting at the South Omaha Historic, Immigrant Historical Museum in the new year. Mr. Castrich and Mr. Garcia, particularly thank you. I know you've dedicated long hours for free to the establishment of this, and it would not be happening without your assistance. So, thank you very much, and...
Thank you. There is a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments, questions? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next is our community service. It's an approval of an agreement with the City of Omaha for the operation and funding of the Greater Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau. Commissioner Boyle, did you want to start?
Yes, so this is mostly renewal of an agreement between the city and the county regarding the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau. The document's been clarified, updated, and streamlined with a lot of work from Deb Ward, the Executive Director. So, with that, I'd like to invite Deb up to update us on a few items.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. Deborah Ward, the Executive Director of the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau. A lot of work by a lot of people up on the dais, too. The interlocal partnership between the county and the city has created a very successful, stable, and effective funding mechanism for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. In fact, it's probably the most stable in the country. I can say that because we learned that and how we weathered the pandemic compared to other CVBs across the country. Most CVBs, funded primarily by lodging tax and membership revenue, had to lay off 50% to 90% of their staff, and they're not all back to 100% right now. We did not have to lay off anyone, which allowed us to take a full-team approach to dealing with cancellations, rebooking, and recovery. In fact, in 2021, we secured 114 pieces of business worth $95 million for the city and the county, and in 2022, year-to-date with one month left, we have secured 150 pieces of business worth $135 million for the community. And the reason that this partnership works is that the city's general fund provides a set amount of money for our operations, our staff, our office, protecting us from economic risks such as the pandemic, while the lodging tax and the hotel occupancy tax provides performance-based budgeting for our programming, our marketing, our advertising, our promotion, our sales efforts, things that can be more easily adjusted when tax revenues waver and go up and down. Overview of the new agreement, the current interlocal agreement is still in effect until December 31 of 2023. The reason we're renewing it now is due to the fact that we start preparing our 2024 budget in just a couple of months, the first quarter of 2023. The city, as part of this agreement, the city agrees to increase the general fund contribution, which in 2023 will be $2.2 million, by $100,000 per year for the first five years, which grows the contribution to $2.7 million a year. The following five years, it will remain at $2.7 million. The city also is providing 0.5% of the city hotel occupation tax. The county agrees to continue to provide us the 2% lodging tax for visitor promotion, which is very much appreciated. The agreement will run from 2024 through 2033. Can't believe I'm saying that, but we've even booked business till 2030 right now. What you're voting on today will take effect January 1, 2024. Not included in the agreement, but I think it's important to note that in 2021, the city did provide the CVB with a lump sum of $3 million, which is currently sitting in our reserve fund. This provides us essentially another $300,000 a year for the next 10 years, but it also provides us some funding flexibility. If lodging tax goes up or down, we can then bring money over as needed from the reserve fund. So, that's it in a nutshell. I think this is a partnership between the city and the county that works very well. I appreciate your understanding and your advocacy for tourism. It's, it's very, we're very grateful for it, I think, from both entities.
Yeah, so thanks for everything you do, Deb. I think just by streamlining the process, I think, and stabilizing the funding for that, I think that only, I think that's good for everybody in the community, so we really appreciate what you do with the fund.
Thank you.
So, I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. And I didn't pay Tyler to say what he said.
I know. I wish he had stepped...
I mean, really, you're sitting there, I almost said, "Oh, my gosh, Deb's sitting here."
Well, and then we have a new museum. You couldn't have teed me up better.
Right. All right, please vote.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Oh, we do have, we do have gifts as you depart, just as a holiday. Thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Motion passes six to zero.
With that, we will move to Human Resources, the weekly personnel report as presented. And then we have a resolution approving the Douglas County preliminary 2023 legislative priorities. As you know, we've had a couple of committee meetings on these, and Marcos has done a great job of putting together what has come out of those, as well as conversations that were had during the tri-county retreat. So, Marcos, did you want to, yep, you're good, okay. Does anybody have any questions about the, did you have a question? Legislative items?
No.
No?
I wanted to see...
About the legislative?
No.
Just a point of privilege? Oh, okay, okay. Did you want to speak on the legislative items?
Yeah, I was just coming down.
Go ahead.
Sure you were through.
Yep, go ahead.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. Good morning, and thank you.
Morning.
I just want to comment against some of your agenda items on the attachments. You're, number one, opposing efforts to eliminate and reduce inheritance tax rates, et cetera. I oppose your opposition. I'm getting to the age where I'd like to be able to pass something on to my relatives without the county or the state reviewing all of that before it gets done. So, I'm opposed to that legislation. And number three, supporting efforts to eliminate and prevent unfunded or underfunded state Well, they have a job to do, too, and I guess their, their laws are superseding county laws. But what you say in that, opposing that, sort of applies to what the county does to us with unfunded programs for this and that. And I think you all know what I mean by that over the few years that I've been talking about it. Those are somewhat unfunded in terms of what a citizen thinks. It has to pay taxes. I'm against number five. Here we go with another tax that people probably don't realize because they're not paying attention. But if you don't have money for mental health problems, don't tax me. I'm opposed to that, particularly when they go out to eat. That's kind of force-feeding us. And number seven, I'm opposed to. This is carte blanche. Now, I can't believe that an overhead camera or satellite can measure the internal rooms of my house and tell me what my square foot is any more accurately than I can when I'm inside the house. And I don't know that a city assessor should have carte blanche to knock on the door and say, "I'm coming in." That kind of sounds like brown shirt tactics to me, so I'm opposed to that. It needs to be very defined and constitutional practices. Thank you.
All right, with that, no other lights. Is there a motion to, oh, Commissioner Friend, on the legislation?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I pushed it too quick.
So, did we have a motion and a second? Is there a motion and a second to, motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Boyle? Please vote.
Commissioners Friend and Morgan abstaining, all other commissioners voting yes.
With that, there is a point of privilege request from Commissioner Friend.
Thank, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to point out there's a Criminal Justice Subcommittee meeting at 1:00 PM in Room 903. Updates from departments and a pretrial release update. Director Myers spoke a little bit to it earlier, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that at that meeting. So, that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. There is no need for an executive session. Our last scheduled meeting for 2022 will be held next Tuesday, December 20. The first scheduled meeting in 2023 will be Tuesday, January 10. And again, as Commissioner Friend stated, there is a committee meeting of the Criminal Justice Committee today at 1:00 in Room 903. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion to adjourn passes six to zero. We are adjourned at 10:41 AM.
Recording stopped.